All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting, Wednesday, February 12, 2025. Roll call, please.
Zamora.
Here.
Butros.
Here.
Harmon. Larson.
Here.
Whitbeck.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Moving on to the agenda, any conflict of interest declarations from any commissioner? Seeing none, moving on. There's no special presentation, so that leaves us, or leads us, rather, to item number five, Consent Calendar. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Was that motion for Commissioner Harmon? Larson, sorry.
I have a minor change to the minutes. There was a note, a notation in the minutes that jokes were made by somebody who gave testimony. That should probably be changed to comments were made. Other than that, I would second this.
So there was already an initial motion, so would Commissioner Larson like to amend his motion?
I'm fine with that adjustment if that needs to be made.
Okay, so that, that was a modified motion from Commissioner Larson and then a second by Commissioner Butros with that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No one opposes? We move on. So this is the regular scheduled meeting for the call to planning its own commission. We serve both in a decision-making capacity and an advisory capacity for the mayor and city council. There are two types of public hearings that this commission conducts. The first is legislative hearing whereby we formulate recommendations on certain land requests. Our recommendations are then forwarded on to the city council who make decisions on legislative manner, matters, excuse me. The second type of public hearings quasi judicial, which involves hearings for the consideration of a land use request such as annexation, rezone classification, or approval of a subdivision preliminary plat. The public hearing procedures as required by Idaho code are as follows. Oral written testimony will be accepted from those who have signed up to speak prior to the hearing being declared open. When providing testimony, please come to the podium, state your name and address, which will be included in the record. Staff will first present a report regarding the application being considered. This is followed by public testimony where the applicant or the applicant's representative will present a summary of the request. For no more than 10 minutes, testimony of those in support will be taken, followed by those in a neutral position, and finally, those in opposition to the request. And all public testimony will be limited to three minutes or less. The application will then, the applicant, rather, will be then offered an opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After the rebuttal testimony is given, the public testimony portion of the public hearing will be closed and no new oral written testimony will be allowed. And so with that, we'll move on to older business on our agenda. And this is an action I also declare this open. This is case number ANN 24-5. With that, staff report, please.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. Good evening. Joe Dodson, Senior Planner here at the City of Caldwell, just for the record. As noted, this application, I guess, first and only one for you tonight is for the Gotti annexation, ANN 24-05. The subject site is generally located west of I-84 and encompasses approximately eighty-eight and a half acres of land currently within the county, all of it. It's north of 2026 and east of Farmway generally, so east of Farmway, west of 84, north of 2026. Properties do have frontage on 2026 Green Road, which is just a local street where if you take 2026 and just head straight east, that's Green Road. And then a little flag lot portion, you can kind of tell there's a little white sliver that goes out to Farmway, which is again, just a flag lot, basically driveway width. Around the site of note, I noted three things on the map. First is the Maverick Fuel Station that was recently approved, part of an annexation to C-3 directly south of the subject property and south of Green Road. A portion of Green Road will be vacated by Maverick, so that frontage would no longer be in existence, but somewhat irrelevant for this, they'll have internal frontage as development occurs. Second one is number two would be the Caldwell Housing Authority directly north of the westernmost parcel that's part of this application. As we know, that's where the housing authority is with their housing as well as their offices there. And then number three, a little further west and south of Maverick is the Canyon Springs RV Park. It's been there for some time now and is budding. My understanding, they may even be wanting to expand at some point in the future just because of their success right there. In general, the site itself has been largely vacant. There is an existing single-family home on the property. I'm not entirely sure if it's being utilized as a single-family home right now, but if it is, they would be allowed to maintain that use until they redevelop overall, since this is just an annexation request. As far as on a broader scope within this area, these properties are located within the city's urban renewal district. I would, and it would provide paths of annexation, should you, should you recommend approval and it gets approved by city council, paths of annexation for other properties within the urban renewal district to annex as well as the Caldwell Housing Authority. For the applicant's request tonight, it's relatively simple in the fact that it's just an annexation request. They are requesting the M1 zoning designation because the future land use map shows it as manufacturing, production, or industrial or both. As far as the new comp plan that was heard last night by city council is not approved, just as an FYI, they're punting that to next week for just a brief continuance for that. Should that get approved, the new comp plan does show this area as employment center and M1 zoning district is compatible with both the existing and the proposed comp plan. The proposed, there is no specific development proposed with this annexation. It's just for annexation and zoning at this time. So there were no site plans or elevations or landscape plans or anything to review as part of this application. They're just requesting the annexation at this time with a development agreement. Specifically with the development agreement, it is important to note it's a broad development agreement. They have proposed a number of uses that are not technically permitted with the M1 zone currently. They want it to be, because it's part of the urban rural district, an opportunity for different types of retail, commercial uses as well as the industrial, and one residential use, which is a multifamily development, but it would require an SGP. And I did want to just go through and highlight some of the, I guess, the variety of uses that they propose within a development agreement for your review, I guess. So again, SGP for multifamily, daycare is permitted, repair services, used vehicle or new vehicle sales is permitted, tire repair sales permitted, ambulance service permitted, dental office and regular office permitted. What is that, building supply outlet or a gas station permitted, grocery store permitted, a bank permitted, fitness facility would be permitted, microbrewery, storage would be an SGP, which is same as it is now. That's not a change. Again, regular office permitted, small engine repair would be permitted as well as like a spa, a vet clinic, wine tasting, bowling alley. Drinking establishment would be an SGP, just like it is everywhere else. Indoor recreation, which is specifically defined within the development agreement, also permitted. Bakery goods, cabinet shop, contractor shop, and machine shop would be permitted. We have recycling permitted, research and development permitted, warehouse and storage permitted, and a brewery would be permitted. A lot of the public and semi-public land uses are, would require SGP's. Those would be like community center, a college, a park or rec facility, a public building, a school. Those would require an SGP. Again, there are some more specifics in the DA regarding how the anticipated development would occur, what kind of improvements would be required, like landscaping, buffering, because current infrastructure policy, and if you have questions specific to that, Haley is here to answer that. But with the annexation, we can't require those things upfront because there's no development occurring. So those things are highlighted within the development agreement for your review as well. That being said, that kind of goes along with access. Accesses will be evaluated at the time that development occurs. With an annexation, they're not proposing any access points right now because there's no development is being proposed. However, there should be plenty access points available. However, 2026 is ITD, so there will be coordination between applicant, city, and ITD on those access points. Water and sewer are available or will be available. They're within reason that the, within reason near the site. Applicant, obviously, if the sewer waters down at Farmway, they'll have to pull sewer and water into their site, et cetera. It's, all of that would occur and be reviewed at the time of development. So if they did a commercial building permit for one of the lots, obviously, they need water and sewer. We would evaluate that at that time, not with the annexation. But in general, it is available. Because they're not proposing any specific development right now, there, we did not receive any comments from agencies, either external or even internal. No other departments provided a staff report for this. There was obviously discussion. We don't do this in a vacuum ever. But there was discussion about, again, just annexation, not a whole lot to review right now upon development, then we'll get into the weeds of all of those things. Again, with public, there was no public comment as of four o'clock this afternoon that I had seen. And so the site was posted and all of the notices were mailed out in accordance with state statute, so we are covered there. That really concludes my presentation. So if the commission does recommend approval of this, we ask that you make that recommendation based and subject to the conditions as specified within the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and order of decision, with the inclusion of the proposed development agreement and those provisions held within that. With that, I will stand for any specific questions you have now unless you want to go straight to the applicant.
Yeah, I think we'll go ahead and go straight to the applicant and then ask all the questions at once.
I do have eight questions specifically for staff.
I'm totally fine with that.
If we, if you're okay, let's wait to see if it gets answered and then we can ask both parties because I think I might be in a similar boat. So applicant is Elizabeth Allen. Please come on up, state your name and address into the record.
Elizabeth Allen, 1330 Williams Lane, Napa, Idaho, 83686, and I'm representing the property owner and applicant. So we're before you this evening to request a recommendation of approval of the annexation of these properties. So we've been working with staff for the past two years on this project to get it annexed into the city and working through the items in the development agreement to get to this point, so we're really excited to move forward with annexing into the city. And that we have a path forward with those annexations that occurred to the south. The DA that was mentioned captures all of the uses that are been discussed in the comprehensive plan update. So we align them to match with what's been planned. And then the, we, the zoning that we are proposing with, along with the development agreement, will be compatible with the surrounding area. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. So I do have a couple of questions. I know Commissioner Butros does too, and sure, others do. Can, how many parcels are part of this application?
There are seven parcels.
Okay, correct. So I guess I need clarification. I'm not sure, and that's why I waited to the time if this for applicant or for staff. So that's what I understood in the application and the letter that was written on for, so on April 2024. However, let's see, in the neighborhood meeting on December 23rd, so to December 2023, rather, it notes six parcels. In the DA, it appears that there are only five parcels referenced on exhibit B of the DA, which is page 80 of the packet. It only shows six parcels. So I was, I was trying to get, figure out where we're at with this, so I guess I'll start there because I have a follow-up to that.
Oh, Mr. Chair, great questions. There has been some movement and confusion of that. There are seven parcels, one of which, my understanding, is a tax parcel that the county created. They did not create that. It was unfortunately because there's the tax parcel lines, the different tax codes or something like that. I'm still.
Yeah.
Canyon County does that differently than Ada County, in my opinion, so I was still trying to figure that out, but they kind of, where the single-family home is, that used to be one parcel. And that's how it's shown on the plat, so that's where the seven-six discrepancy has occurred in general. But it is seven technical tax parcels right now. The five parcels depicted in the thing, that's only regarding the five parcels that are allowed to be considered the original parcels and can be split through the simple lots flat application. So that's where that five comes in. And regards to the neighborhood meeting, in my experience, if something is missed as a parcel number in there, that does not negate the neighborhood meeting. Sometimes that changes, sometimes parcel numbers change. Unfortunately, maybe they had the neighborhood meeting, they did a simple lots, so they have two new parcels within a singular parcel that they did the meeting with. It doesn't change the boundary of the actual application nor what was discussed at the neighborhood meeting. So I think we are safe in that regard, if that was one of your concerns.
It was that my follow-up question, so just so I can recap. So what you're saying is, from the original neighborhood meeting in December 2023 that noted six parcels, what I'm hearing you is affirming that all those authentically impacted by this in the appropriate radius were contacted.
Correct, yeah. Especially the exterior boundary has not changed this entire time. And so the noticing from that boundary has always been consistent.
May I, may I add to that?
Please.
See, I don't have a pointer, but you can see in the bottom, it'd be on your, the bottom right of the parcels. There's a, you could see like a property line that runs through. There's a smaller parcel right there in the southwest corner. That's where that taxing district cut through the property, and so that's why there's two different parcel numbers, is because of how Canyon County districts are taxing boundaries. But that's essentially where that line is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Butros.
Ah, okay. In, in the, Joe, in the application package, it talks about these parcels, if annexed, would provide a path of annexation to the Caldwell Housing Authority sites and other parcels located within the city's urban renewal agency area. Could you discuss the pros and cons associated with providing such a path to annexation?
I'm thinking. Commissioner Butros, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, well, in general, annexing these additional parcels in an area that the city has deemed as being within a, an urban renewal area, that that's an anticipation and a plan for this area to be redeveloped. Part of that is the Caldwell Housing Authority. They've been waiting for a path to annexation, from my understanding, for a long time. And that includes getting utilities out there more solidified as well as providing, I guess, appropriate zoning for what their uses are out there, et cetera. There are also a lot of other industrial properties out there that have worked with the urban renewal agency to get a district put out there and work with even the owner here, Mr. Vagadi, to get their path to annexation so that this whole area can be opened up and redeveloped for more intense uses regarding a mix of uses. But the ones that I've been specifically talking to have been industrial-type use, flex space, really, I guess, lighter industrial. So the, the pros there are going to be additional employment, additional uses in general, additional fees generated for the city, both in taxes as well as service connection fees, things like that, permit fees, et cetera. I don't know that there's necessarily a con. I don't, other than obviously it costs money to service properties, but that's why we charge fees for everything. So I don't know if city engineer has any additional comments on the URA portion of it, but that would be my understanding.
So I'm hoping that there are no issues regarding resource availability and services to be provided should these areas be annexed.
As far as fire and police, no, they've both said that they're okay in the conversations that we've had. Utility-wise, I'll let Haley speak to that.
Yes, thank you, Joe, and thank you, Commissioners. For Public Works, we are prepared to service this area for our utility system and our transportation system.
Thank you.
And I just will add a follow-up question to that, just specifically because I know it's been a concern for a lot of our public meetings recently. What about water for that area? I know it's a different area than we've been looking at recently, but I know that's a question a lot of people have.
Yes, absolutely. This, this zone is not the particular zone that we have concerns with that is further to the south. That being said, we will be looking at another well in this area. As the area builds out, we will need more water, so we are already looking at locations for a well, but we do not currently have a water concern. We're trying to get ahead of it at this location so that we don't have the same issue that arose in the south.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson, did you have something?
No, I was with you guys on the lot quantity questions. I guess it's a, it's a light question, but for the DA, it somewhere says there, and I don't have it highlighted right now, but if, and this isn't related to you guys, but if that there was problems where it causes impact to the city that were negative, that you'd have to review the DA, has that ever happened? I guess this is a general theoretical question, like, does it happen? Do you come back? Do you stop their development and they have to readjust? I don't, we're hoping this doesn't happen, but just in general.
Right. Commissioner Larson, Commissioners, I would say it probably hasn't happened very often. If it has, I think that's more related to there's a mix of uses. We want to be able to have an opportunity to review all of these things. Let's say we approve X and they start doing Y. Through the DA, we now have a different opportunity besides simply a findings document to say, hey, you're held to these standards. We will revoke your CO as an example or do something in order to mitigate that. So it's just kind of covering the city's butt.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Butros.
Okay. So that with regard to the M1 zoning district, the application package says this category includes land that is suitable for heavy manufacturing and production activities, processing of products predominantly from extracted or raw materials, wrecking, storage activities, mining and excavating, landfills, and sewage plants. Uses in this category have a tendency to create potential hazards such as noise, odor, vibration, and other disturbances. Special consideration should be placed on establishing industrial uses in locations where they do not disturb existing and planned residential, mixed-use, and open space uses. So the, the development agreement then goes on to contradict that philosophy. And some examples of the proposed land use schedule include, it's a, it's a whole bunch of stuff like indoor shooting range, welding shop, and all of that's okay, but then it gets down to multifamily residential, RV park, church, and public administrative offices. And, and when I looked at this, I thought these seem to be incompatible with the M1 designation. The M1 designation includes a whole bunch of different uses. So, so this development actually has a lot of flexibility in how the property is used. But it seems like the things associated with residential or very quiet activities. Also, a couple of other categories that are there that are not in this extracted paragraph were, oh, I actually listed all of those. There's multifamily mixed-use development as a special use permit required, convalescent home, nursing home, assisted living facility as a special use permit, daycare center, preschool, homeschool, 13 or more as a permitted slash DIR category. You guys have heard of this yet? This is something I think is very new. The, it, it is where the director of the staff is able to make an administrative decision on compatibility of a planned use. And that, that is something I have not seen yet. So that's a whole new thing, and that, I think, goes back to the new comprehensive plan. And it looked like planning and zoning was trying to reduce the workload of review for the commission and for the city council, but may have inadvertently taken on excessive authority, and I can talk more about that in a minute. RV park or campground as a special use permit, and church or place of religious worship as a special use permit. It seems like it's not an excessive burden to eliminate these uses for something that is predominantly M1. Here, so now let me talk to, bear with me, to the Commissioners about this issue.
Is there a question for them before, so we get to that, or would this be more appropriate for during our deliberation?
So, so my question is, how hard over is whoever authored the development agreement going to be on retaining these types of quiet categories of land use? Is, is it an issue? And then if it's an issue, if it's not an issue, let's see if we can get agreement on eliminating these. If it is an issue, then I can take it up with the Commissioners.
Sure. Chairman, Commissioners, that's a very good question. And we worked with staff, as I mentioned, for two years on this process and creating this development agreement, and especially the development agreement over the past year, taking into consideration the comprehensive plan update and looking at the future land use matrix, and looking at the allowed uses and the supporting uses, which would be multifamily, which would align to the future land use of this area. And if you think about when users come into an area, they look at what's their surroundings. So say that there is a, a big manufacturer on this property. A multifamily user is not going to come next to the manufacturer because they know that their residents could complain. So it's, some of it is market-driven by the user. They put their uses where it's appropriate, keeping in mind that they need to have their users be happy. But we did work with staff on the uses for a long time to establish what would be appropriate for us as a property owner and what staff was comfortable with, especially with the comprehensive plan update. Did I answer your question?
You have answered the question, and it's something that I'll take up during our discussion. discussion period.
Thank you. Other questions from Commissioners?
Chair.
Yes.
I do have additional, now or after, when you guys are in deliberation, your choice.
Okay. Go ahead, just in case it's, there's, I'll just state, there's one other person, Robert Kelly, who signed up in favor, who chose, has chosen not to speak. No one signed up in neutral opposition, so we'll just transition this to that rebuttal portion. And so you can, you're welcome to stay up here if there's any additional information at that point.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Commissioner Butros, great questions. Some of the, well, first, the director level thing, part of that is from, I guess, the comp plan update, but also discussions with council, understanding workloads in general, like you had mentioned, and realizing that really those are uses that we were going to propose doing this in our land use schedule update, where instead of being directly permitted and there's no additional review, but we don't need to go the full SUP level, that there would be the director level approval, where, let's say Director Collins decides, yes, it says it's permitted, but it also says DIR, we want additional screening, we want additional design review, we want additional whatever it may be, that gives her the opportunity to have that at a level of discretion that's not currently in code. That again, is something we are going to be proposing to put it in the regular land use schedule, but this has been done kind of in step with the comp plan, and so it's just a little ahead of the curve. But that is something that we have wanted to do internally to help alleviate some of those issues of that between permitted and special permitted, or non-permitted even. Then also within the DA, it does talk about screening and gives some blatant requirements of, they will have to comply with whatever is in effect at the time of the submittal. With our code updates that we will be coming and showing you guys in a couple of weeks, there are much more intense and heavier screening requirements than what is in current code that we are proposing, specifically for things like this, but even for existing neighborhoods that have some manufacturing literally in the backyard of some of the TN areas and things like that, to, to help buffer those uses better. So there is an understanding by staff, despite saying it's permitted, or even director level review, and understanding by the applicant that there will be additional screening required, it's not just going to be able to be zero-foot lot line with a manufacturing plant right next to residential, absolutely not. We would never permit something like that, and there will be additional requirements through the code updates that we are doing, are going to do.
So the director level review was in referencing to some of the proposed ordinance updates that will be addressed in our next meeting, correct?
Oh, what Joe was saying is, it has been brought up initially in the draft comprehensive plan, but it's not official until it's incorporated in code.
Correct. Okay. Correct. That's correct.
Other question, any rebuttal comments at this point for you two?
Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioner, I think the only thing I would add is, when we're thinking about those, those uses that are like supplemental to the main uses, like multifamily, it'll still require a special use permit, and at that time, it would of course come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, who could also add buffer, additional buffering or other design characteristics that would make it more appealing, but they ultimately, you would have the decision over multifamily in this area if it were to come forward.
Thank you. So with that, we are at the time where I would entertain a motion to close public testimony?
So moved.
Commissioner Butros, and the second Commissioner Larson, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to impose? Right, now it's time for us as commission to deliberate. Questions, comments? Commissioner Butros?
So the example I want to bring forward is, for something like this where there's the overlying M-one zoning, if by special use permit, let's say multifamily housing gets put in, because the initial use in the M-one is something that's relatively quiet, let's say something like a print shop, you know, they're making screen-printed T-shirts or something. But then the, the multifamily housing gets built, and then the screen shop goes out of business, and a new user comes in, and there are very loud welding and repair shop. They don't have to do anything because they are already covered as an allowable use under the M-one. So this creates a risk that after the multifamily housing is in, then a really loud user goes in next door because it's an M-one district. I think the residential uses are fundamentally incompatible with the industrial uses, and we should eliminate those from the development agreement. There are still probably fifty different allowable uses and variations of those, so it is hard to claim that somehow taking out these five or six very specific, we can call them quiet uses, would somehow impact the ability of the owner for enjoyment of property, which is the property rights language.
Mr. Chair, as a quick response to Mr. Butros.
I'm, I'm, I'm really, I think if somebody doesn't direct a question to you, this is the commission discussion part.
If he has a point of information, just to add clarity, it's not new testimony, but staff is definitely available for additional information or clarity.
Well, you can ask him.
Do you have additional clarity?
I do, thank you, Mr. Zamora. The example that you gave is a good example. I would like to note in current code and what would be carried over in the new code, should it get adopted. What you described, like a print shop turning into like a welding shop, that would be considered a change of use, and at that time, let's say the print shop wasn't required to do a buffer, we would require with the welding shop, because it is a more intense use, to put in a buffer or something to help mitigate some of those additional noxious or noise or whatever those uses are. So there are some stopgaps in code currently even, let's say the new code never got even adopted, that current code even has some of that in there, which is great.
What mechanism causes that change of use within the allowable uses to come before the city? How does the city?
A building permit. They have to submit some type of a building permit at some point in order to do probably a tenant improvement, especially for a welding shop from a print shop, they're going to have to do exhausting and other things, different types of things that would have a tenant improvement permit, where then Planning and Zoning gets to review those, and we would determine, hey, you need to have this. In addition, there's business licensing, a new business would have to go in and get a new business license, which would also trigger Planning and Zoning review. There are thankfully multiple touchpoints where Planning and Zoning gets to determine, hey, you're a different use, so we're going to now require X, Y, and Z. This is an example that actually has occurred in a lot of our older neighborhoods repeatedly, where there's been a, something on Cleveland especially, and I know Ms. Davis can attest to this many times, where an older business will go out, a new one comes in, they have no buffer because it's Cleveland, it's been there forever, they haven't really not legitimate parking or X, Y, and Z. Because it's a change of use, we can basically do, all of the planning code is now applicable, and we have to determine what's appropriate as an ask in those situations. So I understand your concern, and thankfully, previous planners understood that too, and so our development code does account for some of those instances.
And I do recall just in past hearings where we've had, because of, I think, I'm thinking of one right on Cleveland, where they had to apply for a special use permit because there was no buffer, and so then they worked with staff to create a buffer, et cetera.
Exactly. And to your point, Commissioner Butros, if you do want to make a motion and recommend some of the uses be removed from the DA, that can be part of your motion. It can be a recommendation for approval with X, Y, and Z being removed from the DA, totally acceptable for you to do, and then council gets to take that up as part of their argument.
I, I appreciate that, and Commissioners, he did include in the package this language, "Should city council want to limit the specific uses listed in the draft DA, staff recommends the council outline the specific changes desired." So, thank you.
Additional comments from Commissioners?
Yeah, the only comment I would have is that I would recommend for them to not make a storage unit, but I'm kind of also for letting the market do its thing, so I kind of am wanting to let the market, although I'm not a big fan of the multifamilies in this spot, if that's what the market kind of determines, and that's, I don't want to inhibit the growth by limiting some of the stuff. So in general, I'm with you on that an M-one shouldn't have a partridge in a pear tree next to it, but that, in general, that I think the market will kind of help us make those decisions. And since most of those, I was concerned about most of those, but since they're all, almost every one of them that was listed, the asphalt plant was listed as a special use, that I feel like it has to come back, so I don't, I feel like it's okay to just give the recommendation of we would not like these types, and then let the council do what they want to do, because that's my opinion.
So you'd be okay with specifying a condition to remove these from the development agreement?
Yeah, and let the council determine that, yeah. And then the council can say yes or no, because they'll have the final say. But I'm, in general, I think most of the, they have, there's a lot of types, but give them a lot of flexibility so that they have variety to do what they need to do, so they can develop and not inhibit a developer to wanting to move to another city if they're going to help develop Caldwell with commercial, which is what we want.
Right. Agreed.
But I think there's adequate scrutiny at all through it. Once we approve an annexation, that doesn't open it to just anything, everything still has to go through the process, so I'm in favor.
I agree, I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Butros in regards to that. That was just one of my curiosities, as I read through that, it is a large swath of uses, and I appreciate the way you articulated that. And I also would be in support in approving a recommendation with the recommendation to also include limiting or eliminating, rather, housing units within that, and I think that's what I heard you say.
Yes.
Other comments from Commissioners?
I just have one follow-up question that's not related for the staff. So for the DIR, if theoretically Director Collins approved it, it's still, it will have to go to council, right? It won't just be one and done?
If it's one of those, sorry, Commissioner Larson, Commission, if it's one of the uses, the only DIR ones that I see in the list are right next to a permitted use, so that would not have to have council approval, no, it would be director level, but it's another, it's an additional layer of approval besides just straight to building permit, because by the time they get to building permit, sometimes we're limited on what we ask when it comes to something brand new like that, versus if it's director level, it allows us to then take that next step and say, hey, normally, this is not required, but we see that you're asking for this welding shop adjacent to a residential, God forbid, but maybe even if it's some type of like nice flex space or brewery, and we're like, we don't really, the twenty-five-foot buffer in code isn't enough, now the director's asking for a thirty-five-foot. That DIR lets us ask for more than what the code would, so that's why Director Collins put that in there.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Did they check, is that even legally allowed?
Commissioner Butros, Commission, yes, in many different jurisdictions, there are different levels of review that can occur, including director, even in current code, it talks about the limits as to what Director Collins can do, and it even allows her to, up to twenty percent reduction in certain things, some, she can also do, I think code says she can do a fifty percent reduction or addition in parking requirements, and that's outlined in code.
And, and we're going to have a chance to review the proposed code?
Absolutely, yes.
February twenty-six, I believe, is that, that's specific hearing.
Absolutely.
I think, I, I think that date was announced, but not as definite.
I hope it's definite.
Is it definite though?
I think it's on the bottom of our agenda, too. I think it was listed. Any other questions about this for, from Commissioners? I guess the only thing, my only piece, my recommendation to staff as this goes to council would be the articulation of the, what you explained to us in regards to the parcels, so that the public, as they're also reviewing the information and the council is reviewing that, it's clearly articulated, because it took me a while, I tried to, I drew a little, took my notes to try to make sense of what I was seeing, because of the discrepancy in, in the numbers throughout.
Thank you. I will change my staff report.
Any, if nothing else, at this time I would entertain a motion, Commissioner Butros.
I can do that. Based upon the testimony and evidence and record in this matter, and upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth herein, do hereby determine and move as follows. The request for annexation of seven parcels are three four six five five, are three four six five seven, are three four six four nine, are three four six four nine zero one, are three four six four nine zero one zero A zero, are three four six four nine zero one one, and are three four six four eight, with a zoning designation of M-one light industrial, is recommended for approval, subject to the conditions of approval as presented, amended, and with the removal as allowable uses of multifamily mixed-use development, convalescent home slash nursing home slash assisted living facility, daycare center, preschool slash homeschool thirteen or more, RV park slash campground, and church or place of religious worship.
Thank you, that was a motion from Commissioner Butros, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Larson, roll call, please.
Butros.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Zamora.
Yes.
Whitbeck.
Yes.
And with that, that motion carries, and we will move on with our agenda. There's no new business, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Whitbeck?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Larson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, media adjourned.